Welcome to April 7th zoning enforcements. It is 1:34 PM on Monday. And do we have a quorum? I believe we do. One, two, three, four, five, six of us here today, working overtime. And we got that quorum. Let's see, we go to public comment. Is there any public comment?
Yes, sir. We have Mr. Michael Bradley.
Okay, Michael.
You guys are ready.
Will you state your names?
Yes. Hi, my name is Michael Bradley. I live in District Four at 1433 Montague Avenue. It's over in Paul Anne. So I was looking at the agenda and it looks like maybe I have the same question that some other folks do. And it's about whether the zoning board would ever consider variances for the required 25-foot yard for a carport structure. So I've talked to some other people I know that are interested in the same thing. Basically, we're trying to understand the reasoning behind it, since we would be building a structure that's pretty much over a paved driveway. We're not trying to build something in the yard, if that makes sense. And I think I was here about a year ago. And what I was told is there is some talk on maybe either changing the rules or maybe starting to consider a variance for people. Because last I checked, car insurance up is about 26% overall. And here in Texas, because of the storms, like one we just got, in fact, we had hail. Just last week, we had, we got hit with hail. So that's basically what, what I'm trying to see if you guys would be interested or if that's possible, if I can apply for a permit or, yeah.
Chairman, may I? So actually, this item just came before city council, their last meeting. So it's something that is on their radar to look at, potentially expanding or doing something, changes to the rules on carports. So we don't have a, like, specific answer for you, but it is something that staff is working on and council is involved with.
I appreciate it. I know, I emailed my city council people and they've never responded. So I kind of gave up on that. I don't know, I just had to show up to the meetings. But, yeah, I know about a year ago, that's what I was told, is that people were talking about it. So I just didn't know what progress has been made, so.
Do you have a one- or two-car garage?
They call it a two-car garage, so I could probably get two Smart Cars. Let's just say that. And that's what, this same question came up before. So if that makes any sense, it's one of those theory two-car garages.
Yeah, some of the houses out there are one-car garages, that's the reason I asked.
All right, hey, I appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you very much. That it? Let me close, public comment. And item number three, review and take any action related to minute records of the regular meeting held Monday, March 3rd, 2025. Is there any questions? Has everybody had a chance?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion to approve and a second. Let's, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 6-0. Item number four, let's see, ZBA 25-03, 2501 West Avenue L. A request for approval of a five-foot front yard setback in lieu of the required 25 feet for a carport structure at 2501 West Avenue L in the single-family residential RS1 zoning district. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Kim Garmoney, Planning and Development Services Administrator. So you're going to get to talk about carports right now. It's been in front of city council. We have concerned citizens coming forward. And so we do have a case coming forward that you'll get to debate on and, and think through some of the specifics, which then will likely be, you know, added into and considered in the city council conversation as those move forward. And first, I want to publicly apologize, Ms. Stone. The applicant did come into our office when I first started here and I spoke with her. And I never got back to her until this actually came before us. And so I did want to publicly apologize for that. I, you know, it was my first week and things were overwhelming. And I don't want that to be the reputation that our department gets. And so we're actively trying to make sure things like that don't happen. So I'm sorry that fell through the cracks and I'm glad that we're here today addressing the situation. Okay.
You got to hold your mouth right.
Oh, no.
Let me see here. Austin, would you mind? Do you want to see if you can make it? Okay.
It's out of battery or something? Okay.
It could be in the wrong way. I'm just glad that I wasn't, you know, that Austin didn't get up here and then immediately make it work, because that's always really embarrassing. Okay, so we are talking about 2501 West Avenue L. It is in the Santa Rita neighborhood in Ms. Karen Hesse Smith's district. It is in RS1 and the future vision plan for the area is neighborhood. You'll see the lot outlined right there on the map. It is .138 acres. And the request is for approval of a five-foot front yard setback in lieu of the required 25-foot setback. Okay. We emailed 14 notifications. You'll see the green is the notification area. And we didn't receive any feedback returned either way. Okay, so the home was originally built in 1949 and was purchased by the current owner in 2017. Just to kind of give us an idea of where we are in a timeline. Additionally, the open structure overlay was passed and adopted by city council in 2005. The home is not in the open structure overlay, which means that they are subject to the 25-foot back, 25-foot setback, just as the rest of RS1 is. One of the things that we ask in, in the staff report, you have those six reasons, is there a special circumstance? What's going on with the lot? And so I did go through those. And the lot is a very unusual shape and it doesn't have access to an alley. So those were the first two things that I considered when thinking about if there was a hardship for this case. However, when I looked at the actual size of the lot, it is 6,007 square feet, where a typical RS1 lot needs to be at least 5,000 square feet. So although it is oddly shaped, it does meet the lot requirement. Additionally, some houses in Santa Rita in this neighborhood have alley access, but many of the residents of the neighborhood don't enjoy that. So it wasn't something that I could say that specifically to this property that would cause a hardship, because many other in the neighborhood don't have alley access. The carport was built within the last five years and it was built without a permit. And we, after going through the criteria, I was not able to find the necessary criteria for recommending approval of this variance. You'll see the pictures here. Again, it, it's true, this isn't an unusual-shaped lot and that's something that you all are going to have to discuss as you work your way through this case. There was not a garage on the front when this house was built in 1949. That was a question that we asked ourselves. Was there a garage that was then closed in? But it does not appear that there was one built. There is a detached garage. If you look at the bottom photo, they do have an RV there parked on the side of the home and that is one of our recommendations, to get into compliance with our ordinance and, and get that out of there. But right behind that, there is a freestanding garage that backs out directly onto Jackson. So you'll need to consider that fact also as we move forward.
Does any of your photos show the garage? This one? The garage, is there? Okay.
No, sir, it doesn't show it from head on, but if you look, this is the...
Mm-hmm, I see it now.
Yes, sir.
Mm-hmm. Was that the, you think that's original structure?
I believe we looked at that in that it was built after the house was originally constructed, but I don't know the year offhand. I'm going to guess it was whenever Jackson was less populated.
Yep.
Johnson, oh, I'm sorry.
Johnson.
It has a hip roof on it, too. I was just wondering if it might have had a flat roof at one time and they put a hip on there and put that breezeway through there. I just didn't know. The siding on there looks, matches up with that siding that's on the house.
Sure, and we do have the applicants here today, so if you have specific questions, that I think they'd be happy to...
I like that breezeway through there.
Do you have any other questions for me? Want to go back and look at any of the slides again? There's a lot of information for this one.
Go ahead. The house next door has a front entry garage, doesn't it? This one never had a garage.
Correct.
Except at the back. I'm sorry, let me interrupt your presentation.
Oh, no, I'm finished.
Are you finished?
Yes, sir. I'm just waiting for questions to see if I can answer.
Do you have any questions?
So the recommendation, following ordinance and, and what I discovered, my recommendation is denial. Of course, you all have the final say in, in how this case goes. And like I said, we are recommending that the applicant follow through with removing the RV permanently from the Johnson side. I put Jackson in there, so sorry. And seeking approval from city council for the row encroachment, because they, they do need city council approval to have that paved area on the side of their home.
Do you, the shape of the, that hole for the two houses there, Avenue L in front, Avenue N on the back, and Johnson on the other side. House was built in 1949. They just started construction out there at the San Angelo College in 1947, right? Correct? I'm wondering what, if I was the builder, which I have been known to do that, I'm wondering what the builder was thinking when he put the garage on the Johnson Street side there. I wonder if Johnson ran all the way through at that time? I wouldn't think so. You know, I'm asking. Avenue N, this was kind of towards that end of town.
Yes, sir.
I remember hearing stuff about Saul Ross and all that, but that was in the late 50s. I wonder where Avenue N ended? You know, the traffic pattern when that was put there is just kind of, it's grown over the years, wouldn't you say, and it's made that Johnson Street.
Agreed.
Yeah. It looks like Avenue L would be the least-traveled traffic pattern. That's an unusual lot. Would that be, if I came in with the preliminary plat today, would y'all approve that as, with, as an R1? Next door, you have, what's that? Shereen Jackson's.
Yeah, it's Jackson's. Across the street, across, it's right on the other corner.
Yeah, all that's commercial and then all of a sudden it jumps over to residential right across the street.
We did, and we discussed this, for sure. And so the vision plan, what city council sees moving forward, is still neighborhood. However, if I were a builder or if I were plating this, putting a new house on there, it wouldn't work. We did look at the setbacks. It has, you know, double frontage. We don't have triple frontage, but if we did, it would. So...
It would almost be impossible to build a new structure there.
Yes, ma'am.
It's kind of, it's kind of interesting, though. Because the commercial is coming, it's Johnson. It almost looks like it stopped right there and then the developer put the rest of the subdivision. But for that to become a residential, I don't think, as a, as a, as a developer, I'd want that residential right there anyway. Anyway, that's a sad point.
Okay. And we do have the applicant.
Can you go back to the pictures, please?
Good afternoon.
Hi, state your name, please.
Kiva Stone, 2501 West Avenue L.
Welcome.
The pictures.
Thank you. I guess, I just have a few comments. In what I got from Erin about the denial, says that there are many other homes in the neighborhood that do not have alleys. My next-door neighbor and I, and the one directly across Johnson, are the only three in that neighborhood that do not have alleys. That's it. Everybody else has an alley. I don't know what "many" constitutes, but there's only three. Also, it says that I'm not deprived of the rights commonly enjoyed by others. I have numerous pictures within walking distance, mile, mile and a half, of pictures that was in the packet I presented to city council that have carports, side of the house, front of the house, all over the house. My question, too, is, is there's one up the street that has two canopies. So I can take the carport down and put a canopy up and put five-gallon buckets? I'm asking, you know?
You'd probably be back here if they caught you.
What?
You'd probably be back up here.
Well, I'm going to be back here anyway for the RV, because there's RVs all in my neighborhood. And, you know, I just, I'm just trying to make it look better. It didn't even have a driveway. They parked in the grass. I mean, but I also can make it look real ugly, too. And that's not what I want to do, but it is what it is. And you say it's at city council. He's been here a year ago. What is the timeline? Are we waiting five more years before y'all decide to talk about carports again? I mean, I've been doing this two years.
What we're here today is on this particular item, on this agenda.
Okay.
As far as predicting what happens with city council, that's way beyond us.
I understand that.
We are quasi-judicial board here. And we're going to try to rule on your case, particular case, and, and try to find, if we can, some help.
Okay, because in here it says there is, there's another, there's another solution and I just need to know what it is, what the solution is. Y'all have questions for me?
Let's see, she mentioned you didn't get a permit.
Correct. I did not know, single. Eight years ago, when I moved back, I did not realize I needed a permit.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I have a master's and reading through the ordinances is a little, it's a little hard.
You tell me what it says after you read it. I've been reading through them a long time.
Sometimes the, the letters and the numbers don't, aren't exactly the word...
Now, let me ask you this. That's a, when I looked, I went out and looked and drove around. That, your house didn't originally have a garage there. Is that a kitchen? That front window, that little window?
That is the living room. The one near where the carport is is a kitchen, yes, sir.
That's a kitchen and the living room's there. I looked at the foundation, there was never a garage there at all.
I'm sorry?
There was never a garage on the front, it was closed in.
Correct. The one on the side, our golf cart barely fixed it.
Yes, it's very small.
It's very small.
Did you have a, did you have a contractor install that carport?
Yes, ma'am.
And your contractor didn't reach out to get a permit? Was he a licensed contractor?
He was. They are no longer in San Angelo, but they're based out of...
Waco?
Somewhere outside Waco. Which, when I applied for the permit, all the specs and everything are in there and his stuff is in there.
When you applied for the permit?
After they said I needed a, when I got the first letter. It was for permit only. Never did they know that it wasn't in an open structure until I went down to city council and tried to, to talk to people. And when I'm talking to the girl up front, I think her name's Julie, she was in that, and Austin was talking to me and we were pulling up. I was trying to show another carport and he said, "Hang on, see this red?" And I said, "Yes, sir." And he said, "That's open structure. You're not in the open structure." I said, "Well, that's never been brought up, you know, show me." I got it for not having a permit. So now they reissued it a year later for no permit and not an open structure. So the recommendation that Erin gave me was to reach out to my city councilman and see if we could maybe change the ordinance. I've reached out five times and never had a reply.
You've got to go camp out on the front porch, don't you?
Well, I've been at city, I mean, I've got a timeline of everything I've done. Been down to city hall numerous times. No one's ever got back to me.
Yes. Now, what staff is doing, they're doing literal interpretation of the black-and-white code. You're here, we're hearing you. And we try to find the...
I know. We, we try to help out.
I understand that.
Wiggle room, but they're, they're, they're little, they're little...
I'm learning along the way. I'm just trying to figure out what we need to do.
Well, we're getting there.
Okay.
You're doing well, you're doing well. Keep going.
Any other questions for you?
So you said in your letter that there was another, what, I forgot what you said on the option? Option? Does it, what is the other option?
It doesn't give me that. It just says there are other options. It says, let me see. Let me see where it is. I wrote it down.
Well, I'm the one who wrote it. So I wrote other options because of the size of the lot. They could, they could try to put something in the back, but then that would mean getting an approach off of Avenue N. They could shorten their carport, but that would mean it wouldn't cover all of their cars. So there are other options, but none of them are optimal.
And one thing is, because that is a triangle, because they don't want to hit the light at Avenue, at Johnson, they do cut through. We're very busy. I have numerous college kids that live up the street and they walk constantly. I don't see parking in the street was, was very good for pedestrians. That's why I poured the concrete and made a driveway. You know, I'm just, it's heavily, I've lived around a issue my whole life. I lived on Rosemont, on the opposite corner. And so, you know, it's, it's growing and I'm glad it is. But it is a very busy island.
Yeah.
It is an island.
Yes, it is. I'm on an island all the...
What is the right-of-way? How much right-of-way is there? It says you want five-foot setback from the...
25-foot.
Let me read this.
They're requesting a five-foot...
Right now, from the, from their property line, they, they have five feet from the...
That's the right-of-way?
To the carport?
Yes, ma'am.
There's 17 feet from the street?
From the right-of-way.
Okay, what's the right-of-way?
Your, your property line...
Property line.
Yes, ma'am. And then beyond that is the right-of-way for it's, for the city to...
And it has to be how many?
Well, your setback has to be 25 feet.
So the right-of-way is what, 10 feet or 5 feet?
I'm not, I didn't measure the right-of-way, I'm so sorry. It looks like it's 10 feet.
I couldn't tell.
So where that red ends is the right-of-way? Is that correct?
It's 10.
The, the red lines are your, is your property lines, yes, ma'am. And so in between the property line and the street is the right-of-way.
Has to be how many feet?
Uh, I don't think there...
It'll be on your survey, probably, if you have a survey.
I just meant, how many does it have to be?
From the red line, are you saying 25 feet from the red line or from the street?
From the red line, from your property line.
Sorry, I'm sorry. 25 feet from the red line, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I don't even think the house is 25 feet from the, from the street.
Well, it looks like the carport is how long, 20?
Yes, sir.
20 and 20. It's not in the right-of-way, is it? Okay.
Is there an option if they didn't have that open drive or carport and if it was technically attached and took up that extra footage?
The setbacks would still have to be the same, no matter the architectural style of the carport.
But it wouldn't be within that setback amount if it were... Obviously, there's a difference between where the carport is now and then however many feet to the actual roofline. So if it was technically tied in, is it going to be...
I think there's maybe, maybe of two feet between the carport and the house.
Yeah, and then you get into the thing, I looked at this also to see, because thinking about if you set the poles for the carport back, then we could measure from there, but then you're, you're getting really close to your house.
You're not gaining much.
Yes, no, ma'am.
At all.
And you can only have, I believe, a 24-inch overhang off of that carport. So even if you put the, the poles way back, it still would, it wouldn't cover very much.
The developer of that area, I believe, was Ted Brown. He always had his houses setback 30 to 35 feet. This looks like it's a little closer. One's across the street, so it's a bit further there, setback. Probably to get on that lot. So if you got 20, 25 feet, there's still five foot left. You wouldn't be in the right-of-way. I think it'd be more than... Anyway. Sorry, go ahead.
Any more questions?
Well, let's just assume, let's...
You also laid this concrete pad?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that the RV?
Yes, ma'am.
At the same time you did the carport?
No, ma'am. Separate.
Did you get a permit for that?
Um, he went down. We wanted a circular drive and they told him no. But as long as he didn't cut the curb, he could put the concrete there.
The, the concrete contractor?
The person that laid the concrete. Yes, ma'am.
So there was a curb cut?
We had the driveway going to the garage and it connected to that concrete.
Yeah, please come up and speak freely, my friend.
I can see, tell you what he's saying. The concrete that's at the garage was there. We just extended it up to the house and that whole side is concrete.
But you didn't insert like a driveway up to that? You just left it in the...
Just from the existing driveway on the side of the house.
Can you introduce yourself, sir? I'd love to meet you.
Sorry, my name's James Stone.
Thanks.
Yeah, just from the existing driveway that was going to the garage. We went from there to the very front of the house with concrete all the way up.
Whatever we decide, whatever happens, I'm just one vote. But here, just one vote. I would have a issue with the design of that carport as far as being... Oh goodness, what's the word? Needs some more curb appeal to it, let's call it that.
Or what?
Curb appeal. Would you have any problem whatsoever of saying, dressing it up a little bit with some brick columns there on the front? Top deal, even though it's not, there's not any brick structures around there.
Um, can I approach or show you pictures?
Sure.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I would, because this is my neighborhood and I think mine looks a lot better than that.
Let me see.
Um, these are in my neighborhood.
I saw the one across the street, that's not...
And you put a carport.
Six-foot fence.
I mean, a canopy, yellow canopy, yellow tent.
And a six-foot fence.
And I don't, you know, I didn't have a problem with it. I didn't complain. This one, I don't believe is cosmetically better than that.
Well, I'm just curious.
I mean, I just, I'm asking why I have to do it, not that people do.
Well, because we're special here. We're just special. We'll make it look good. Well, it does. But there, there, there isn't many in the, when I drove around, I didn't see any carports in the neighborhood.
Well, then you're going to have to ride with me, because I got five more coming up here.
Okay, in the existing, I mean, right in that surrounding area. Well, I didn't drive every street.
I'm sorry?
I didn't go down, down every street, but I didn't see many.
There's quite a few. These are in Santa Rita. This one's on Austin. This one's on Moore Guard.
Austin?
This one is on Austin.
Well, that's not the neighborhood.
15 Austin Street, that two-story.
It's the two-story. I'm familiar with it, yes.
I wasn't driving the whole century.
This one is in Santa Rita. This one's on Moore Guard.
This one's not anywhere near.
Yeah.
It's on the corner. It's on a weird different line.
And they've been there forever. The guy that the guy across the street had this 27 years.
Yeah, you got any suggestions?
We really need to capture the comments through the microphone, if we can at least.
You got, you got any suggestions on how you might want to dress that up a little bit?
So, Mr. Chairman, I want to address that just a minute. At council this last week, when we discussed this, one of the hard things that council, I think, is struggling with is that there's legislation where we can't regulate the materials for certain things. And this is one of those things where we can't require people to build it with stone people to build it with stone or brick or anything, because if the model codes that are adopted allow a certain material, we have to allow it. So, um, I, I don't think we can enforce that.
That's kind of my main point. Now, did it pass? Does it pass or...
Well, that was at the state level. Yes, it passed, yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Forget it.
Oh, okay.
Are you, Mr. Chairman, are you referring, did it pass within council or at the state level? Okay, okay. My understanding it's tabled at the council level.
Is it?
Yes, sir. Is that correct? Or, or...
Well, I mean, they've given, uh, staff direction to keep working on it, I mean, I think there were a couple of things they wanted to try to address with the understanding that we can't regulate materials, and so if we're gonna allow them, we're gonna have to do it with the understanding that, you know, we may not get to decide what it looks like. So, we're working through that. Aaron received some direction and, and we will be bringing it back at some point, but I'm sorry, ma'am, no, no timeline at this point, I'm sorry.
Do you think it could be negotiated at this level with the, with the applicant?
Uh, no, so, I mean, if, if they meet the variance criteria, of course, you can grant the variance, but I don't think you can condition it on certain materials being used.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay.
I have a question for, I guess, city staff. Twice, we've mentioned lack of alley. I'm just curious what that has to do with this case. Uh, is that a har, is it or is it not, there's no wrong answer, a hardship to, to preclude from any building of a carport?
It's not a hardship, it's just something that we see in San Angelo a lot, especially with the older homes, and many of the homes around the Santa Rita neighborhood, they use their alleys for parking specifically, and you can put any kind of carport in your backyard, um, so they don't have that option.
I see. But as it pertains to the sixth criteria, it is not, having an alley is not a hardship?
No, sir.
Okay.
And is it?
No.
I mean, so, this was a very hard case for, for me to present the, the way that we did, but I felt like I had to follow exactly what we have now, um, and with the understanding that this is a bigger conversation going on. And so, is it a hardship that they don't have an alley, um, and what does that mean for the wider development community and houses being built now, and like, how do we integrate all of that as we're thinking how we solve this problem on a bigger level around town?
One at a time, right?
Well, that sounds tedious.
No, no, you're doing the literal interpretation thing, you just didn't have any wiggle room.
But more poignantly, this is not in the city overlay where it is, say, allowed?
Correct.
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 Number two, this was built in 2017 without a permit.
Correct.
Okay, no further questions.
And by allowed...
I was trying to find out unknowingly to her, or if it was done knowingly by you, your spouse, or anyone like that.
I think she covered that. Did you call down there?
Yes, she did.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more? Art, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. All right.
So, is there an open structure overlay in that area? And if so, where does it begin and end?
No, ma'am, it is not in that area, and I don't have a map of where it is. Of course, you just, you, thank you so much, you're so prepared, appreciate that.
Do you need, we're, we're a little bit short in the planning department, do you need a job?
And what the open structure overlay means, it, it means that, uh, there is the ability to be more flexible and to have different variances.
Right.
And it also, because it was established before the 2019 rule went into effect about materials, it does have architectural material designs associated with it.
And, and as a note, I heard at the city council meeting, um, they will not change the overlay layout at the moment.
They didn't, yeah, they didn't have any...
They, they would not be accepting any changes to that layout for the time being.
Correct.
So...
Yes, ma'am.
I got a feeling that that's stuck.
And this is for the, I mean, this is access to me, I had to go up there and, I mean, accidentally got caught, you know, accidentally, we're here, I don't know how far down it goes, but we are on the avenue, and all of this, the red, the dark part is in the open structure. Okay? Make up the other way, I may have it silenced.
It is, in the open structure.
Oh. And just, I think I understand this right, but I think the open structure, it hadn't been updated since 1958.
I'm not sure about that, there's been some spot areas that's...
Spotting the dark.
Yeah.
The open structure overlay was adopted in 2005.
So, it doesn't show that in the, uh, or the code, you know, when you go to the codes and all?
Yes, ma'am.
It says 1958, I believe?
For RS, for RS1, okay. I will, thank you.
You know what I think the codes ought to say when you open it up? Everything needs a permit. Big, black, red, whatever.
True, true. I'm on a building, I was an educator, so I have no clue.
Yeah, what do you need a permit or what do you not?
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, I looked through them one time about carports and underneath the front, kind of the front page, it said, you need a permit for a brick ledge, and I thought, my goodness gracious. There it was, right on the front, but the carport was, stuff was buried in there. I did talk to some people about it, just put on there, everything needs a permit, or most everything.
Pretty much.
Yeah. Big four ladders across there. Brick ledge, it's going to be right now, on the front page. Now, this is allowed?
So, there was, the shaded area is allowed?
Wow. All right.
And she's just...
Board discussion?
She knocks off the unshaded.
Mason, Mr. Brooks?
The only question I have is on 2507 Avenue L and across the street, 2419, I guess again, Avenue L, the three residences, quote, "without an alley," end quote, what are the other two residences doing to mitigate this problem?
They have garages.
Okay.
This house was, was not built with a garage on the front, towards Avenue L.
The house, 2507, has a garage, if you're looking at this picture right here, it's the, to the left, where the driveway comes in. The house across the street, if I remember correctly, when I drove by, it has a carport in the middle of the driveway. Well, it did, not too long ago. It has a, just, it has one similar to what they have, but it's in the middle of the driveway with a lot of stuff underneath.
Right, it was an illegal carport, which has since been torn down.
Do what?
It was an illegal carport, which has since been torn down across the street.
It's, it's been torn down. Oh, great. Sorry, it was a little bit of an echo.
It's a peculiar shaped track of land, they just squeeze that two blocks to the other zone.
A block, a block.
Yeah.
A block.
And they put the garage on the front, put it on the side on Johnson.
There was a bunch of stuff underneath that, I remember.
More, more? Mr. Brooks?
I mean, I think it's, are we, are we in discussion with us?
Yes.
Okay. I, I obviously travel those streets quite a bit, so I know that that Johnson is very difficult to get in and out of on that Johnson side.
I'd agree.
Even if a car technically did fit in that garage, um, I mean, if there's something that, hopefully, we can find a solution so that they can at least have some kind of carpet parking.
Well, you have to get into the special circumstances part of it, and it is peculiar to the land, because it's a peculiar piece of property, I mean, it's just way, way down. It was not built with a garage, the garage was on the back, you know, and what's happened over the last eighty years to create this situation and that... Oh, I don't know. And those, those actions are not a result of that. And I think if we literally do the little, literal interpretation, we're, we're kind of... They don't have a place to park their vehicles out of the weather.
So, city, and you may have already answered this, where the RV is technically, well, never mind, I answered my question in my own head, because I was about to say, could they just have the carport come off of that, but then that would still not meet the sideline setback? Correct?
I think granting the variance is the minimum action for this. Well, uh...
Do what?
I think granting the variance for it is the minimum action under this checklist. I don't think it's contrary to the public interest at all. Those houses, it's just unusual land, a lot of land there.
It's been there since 2017, I don't think it is making an issue. Uh, it's working as intended. The only, the only issue that, and of course, I think you addressed that you're doing something with the RV, that's, you know, when you, when you do pull up to that sign, I, I go down that street all the time going home, and so it is sometimes difficult to see around the RV, you know, to, to go across the street. But the, the carport, I don't see an issue with.
I guess my only comment to us would be number five, granting the variance will not adversely affect adjacent land in a material way. They view, city views that it would, because it would open up, in essence, everybody not in a gray area on that map for front facing or a hodgepodge of carports, so I would...
It would only do that if we actually, if the variance or the ordinance were to change. You do these on an independent basis.
Right, but to her point, there's several already happening, and I just wouldn't wanna open us up for future issues down the road.
Yeah, this, this lock configuration is different.
Unique.
Yeah, it's unique.
It's very unique, and, you know, anytime you vote on anything, it opens up that area.
Sure, sure.
I think it's been, today, I think it means on commercial, with the issue and all of it over there.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
How long has this been going on that they've been trying to get this straight? That...
Two years.
Two years? And y'all padded up since 2017?
Correct.
How? I don't get that.
You got a one through six pretty well.
So, i- in the city of San Angelo, code compliance is based on complaints. So, at some point, someone complained, and that is how the notice of violation in that process got started.
Was it the complaint on the RV, and then you opened yourself up to that with the, when you came in about the RV?
It was a complaint before we had, I think, before we moved it. The RV was there before, um, well, the carport was there, the RV was parked there, we've only had it a year, two years, and we got a complaint, we moved it. Um, we know someone on the code compliance, the water side or whatever, and then there's one on the, and Rudy is who I talked to numerous times when he would call me about, um, the carport. Um, we went on, we went a year with Rudy, back with me and him, and he was like, have you come to, are you gonna take it down? I said, no, sir, I'm going to, he said, you need to go to City Hall. I said, I have, I have, I've gone for a year, I've got it all documented. Every time I went, never got an answer, never got a reply, contacted my city councilman, never got a reply, went and talked to her, never got a reply. It wasn't just one person, it wasn't. Um, the complaint, I was told, can be from Rudy, driving home and back or to when he goes to eat, okay? Then I was told it was a military man in the neighborhood, and my thing was, is if mine is complained on, why was the one not across the street complained on? He had stuff all underneath it, y'all saw it, I mean, I, I've got pictures, he had his for twenty-seven years, why is it a problem now?
Maybe y'all go play the lottery?
I do. If I'm not winning, I tell you what, now, it's gonna be there, it's not gonna be nice.
And these complaints...
We have to split the difference, driver, you're caring, okay.
These complaints were specific to the carport as opposed to the RV?
The carport, I got a written letter, I've got the date, um, he sent, and it said, I've noticed, they didn't say a word about the carport when they said something about the RV, but then all of a sudden, now it's the carport, that it didn't have a permit, so that's what I went down to do. And that's how it evolved, me doing the job, trying to find out, that they found out I wasn't in an open structure. So, now I got reissued, three months later, um, I got issued that, you know, it's not open structure, and then January of this year, the guy across the street got one. Not, I didn't complain, I had no problem with it, and he had, he took his down, because his wife and him were tired of fighting the city. But, but, I mean, his could be put in the backyard, and he did put his in the backyard.
Good, all right.
Okay.
I got another question. How many complaints does it, well, how many complaints does it take for y'all to bring this case up again? And if we come to an agreement on this, is it gonna be brought up again?
If we, if we vote on it, and it, the variance gets granted, then it's dead in the water, and she can either keep it or not, and it, even complaints.
That'll be it?
Yeah.
No more? Okay.
For the carport, not for the...
Not for the...
Ma'am, I have one more question before you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, do you, when this was built in 2017, we've already visited about the permits and the contractor and how, I guess, they're not here anymore, sounds like, or...
Correct, but they are based out of Waco.
Okay, neither here nor there. If you build something in here, you should go through the permitting process. What I'm trying to discern is, if you're, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? If you're paying the price for their ignorance, albeit there is, you did hire, you did enter into a contract, so are you secondhand, if you will, responsible for their ignorance? And I don't, that's, I don't know.
I mean, when I go to a contractor to buy, to do something, you assume that they know...
Yeah, but you know what happens when you assume, I know this is on YouTube, but...
How would I know? Why would you tell me that, you know, however many years later?
I understand, so, but I'm...
Eight years later, you're telling me?
I would guess it falls on the property owner.
You do? I would agree as well. As a personal responsibility, I would agree.
Right.
Unfortunately, in this case, but I agree.
Yeah, when they go, I mean, like I said, just face it, everything needs a permit, I mean, there's a break, there's less things that you don't need a permit than things need a permit, and it's hard to find, Mr. Vanoy.
Mr. Chairman?
I didn't see you in here.
I came in late, but can I address the board on a couple of questions that may have been answered or asked?
Yes, sir.
Maybe I have a few clarifying answers, and I'll start with Mr. Rivas, who's asked some very good questions. Um, one of the challenges, there are multiple departments that deal with violations like this. Our role as planning is doing the, the stuff before the eight years, before their contractor didn't come, and now we're at the end trying to solve it. Um, so, while this may allow the carport in a setback that's closer than twenty-five feet, they still have processes to go through with the city, which planning may or may not be a part of. Um, and so, I just wanna make that clear, that this may not solve everything for them. Um, so, I understand that holistically, the, the goal is, you know, if one entity within the city is working on something, that that is communicated around so that everybody's working on it together. Um, I, I will say, the applicant, yes, they did come to the city multiple times, I know each time that we have documented that they came to planning, an answer was given, and the answer was, you can go to ZBA, but the city staff would not support it. And so, once they did go to city council, then they did submit an application to come to the ZBA, it was past the April date and passed our required state notices, and so we were not able to get it to the April date, that's why it's delayed until May, uh, this date today. Uh, I do think the staff did struggle with this area, there is a challenge with open structures in our community, and the number one challenge, and, and Mr. Cortez has mentioned it numerous times, is contractors failing to get a permit. And unfortunately, property owners get stuck in the middle, because they believe the contractor's doing what they're supposed to do, and then years later, because someone makes a complaint, the structure's still not permitted, which then it may be not be in the open structure overlay. And that is, that is challenging for our community, and so that's why Councilwoman Gonzalez asked to bring forward some discussion items on open structures. Through our investigation, the state will no longer let cities control materials, slope, or how they look. So, that's concerning for some of our neighborhoods, some of our neighborhoods it may not be, but we have not been able to work through where should those be allowed, and allowed by right, and it's really a setback issue at this point, not a, not a, um, a design issue. I think back in 2005, that was both a setback and design issue, the overriding rule was, if it looks like it's integral to the house, been there, maybe it kind of looks original, that property allows to hold and grow its valuation like a next door property that may not have that and doesn't have something that looks like it's added on. And so, that's, that's where our challenge is from planning, is trying to decide, does this impact adjacent properties? While we understand and have the common sense and, and understand what the purpose is of an open structure, and why it's there to protect property, we're not there just looking at in property A, we're looking at property A, B, C, D, all the way through Z and then some, and how does this impact the entire community? So, I'm not sure that answered all your questions, but, um, I'm happy to sit, stay here if you have any other questions for me.
My answer is...
I'm Erin Vanoy, Director of Planning Development Services. Sorry, ma'am.
I think you covered it well, I don't have a question.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Rivas?
That's it, that was, they left me.
Right, uh... All right, we got through the board discussion, and so now I'm going to ask for a motion.
As much as it pains me, I'll make a motion that we support the denial found by staff.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay.
And my pain is also noted for the record. That's tough.
It is.
Okay, got motion to, what do we call, motion to deny? We have a motion to deny in a second, do we take a vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, what boss? Three, three.
Three, three.
Three, three.
I think it was tied, three, three.
Yeah, so, I mean, the motion doesn't pass.
Motion doesn't pass.
In order to grant the variance, you need a six oh.
On a small deal. Another motion?
Make a motion to approve the variance.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion to approve in a second. Let's discuss this. Is there any, so the legislation came down about materials, correct? There's no other legislation that we know about with these kind of stuff, carports and everything? Okay, I got a motion to approve in a second, go for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
It's four, two.
Four, two.
Four, two.
Got to be six, huh? So... The motion, no, go, we have to have the six, six oh vote, so let's deny it, I guess is the word, right? Deny it.
Do I talk to the city on what the next judge is?
I think you move up to, go up to planning?
District court.
District court?
District court. Just my understanding, is that correct?
Okay, four, four to two, four, four, and two against. We tried. Sorry. Yes, ma'am. How long did they have to take to take it down? Enforcement?
I don't know. I guess we have talked to code, but, I mean, they get an appeal period from this decision, I think it's 30 days, so certainly nothing would happen until that appeal period is run.
Okay. Rudy? Yes, ma'am. Thank you, thank you very much. We did the best we could. All right, moving on. Item number five, ZBA 25-04, 314 West 12th Street, request for approval of a 15-foot front yard setback in lieu of the required 25 feet for new residents at 314 West 12th Street in the two-family residential RS2 zoning district.
Thank you, Austin Reed, planner. This one comes to you out of the Blackshear neighborhood, it is district number four, Lucy Gonzalez's district. The zoning here is two-family residential RS2, and the vision plan is neighborhood. As you mentioned, we have a request for approval of a 15-foot front yard setback, whereas normally require that 25 feet. So we mailed out 31 notices, did not receive any official responses. We did technically have two rounds of notification for this, because a variance request was changed at some point. On that original round of responses, we did receive one in favor, but I wasn't able to add that to this slide. So on to our staff analysis, the variance here, it's for a new single-family residence. Of course, it's a vacant lot right now. We do think that there's special circumstances, and that this is a minimum size undeveloped lot. It's surrounded by other developed lots, and these residences on these developed lots have not had to comply with the front setback requirements. So we think that literal interpretation would deprive the applicant of these commonly enjoyed rights. Additionally, we think the granting of variance is in public interest, as it would promote the infill of an undeveloped residential property. So, all in all, we were able to find that the necessary criteria for granting a variance can be met. Here's a look at the lot, of course, like I said, it's just a vacant lot, there's not a lot to see here right now. And then I've included the site plan, if it helps anyone. As you can see, we have that 15 feet in the front, we still have the 20 feet in the rear, and then we have about six and a half feet on all sides, so it complies with all the other setbacks. If you want an idea of what that 15 feet looks like, 316, which is two doors down to the left, that's at about a 15-foot setback right now. May be hard to see from here, but... So it would, it would appear normal for the block face. With that, we are making approval, if you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Reed?
No questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is applicant here?
I do not believe so, and I don't think we have any public comment either.
So we don't have any comment there, so just move on to the, to the board discussion here.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve in a second. Let's go to vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, it passes six, zero. Number six, division report.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to correct something I said earlier. The appeal period is actually 10 days from decisions from this board, not 30.
I'm sorry, the...
The appeal period is 10 days, not 30.
The appeal?
Yeah, to district court.
Oh, okay.
So, I just wanted to correct that.
So you have 10 days for your appeal to district court. To the vote.
To the vote.
To the outcome of today for you.
The district court.
You're appealing to district court on your behalf.
Where are they?
Right, there is no appeal to city council, it's, at this point, it's to the courts.
To the district court, yes, ma'am.
Where's that, County Courthouse? Do we know?
Yes.
It's County Courthouse?
Yeah, ma'am, we can talk after, but really, you'd need to get your own attorney to advise you on the processes. We can't give you legal advice, so...
Do they need an attorney to do it? I know, I know, I know, I know, I know, yeah. All right, division report?
Got to have a permit. Got to have a permit.
Division report, is there a division report?
Hi, Kim Garminy, Planning and Development Services Administrator. We continue to try to improve in our department. Something really amazing that Austin did this last week was set up a workshop for us to learn how to further our skills and be able to present data using GIS, more in-depth GIS than we currently do. Also, in our department right now, we are hiring. Like you said, we have been short-staffed in planning department for quite some time, and we are in the final rounds of hiring a planning technician, which will round out our team, as well as a new front desk person. We have very good candidates right now, so we're super excited. We just got a new person in combination plans review in building and inspections, and they do come from us from the development community, so we are all full on that side, that's very exciting. And I'm sure that you all have heard around town that Erin has been working with city council, as well as public interest, public, people from the public who are interested in the expansion of the cultural district, as well as the updated sign ordinance. There will be a joint meeting of planning commission and city council on April 15th to discuss both of those things. Are there any questions?
Yes, you spoke of rounding out your team, where is the status of rounding out our team?
Yes, sir, exactly. We continue to try to find people also interested in the public, to do things like serve on your board. We have some people that, that we're following up with. So hopefully, we will be rounding out your board, as well as with the alternates. I know that it becomes very difficult to do the governance work that you need to do without the members that you need, so we continue to try to work on that, it's been a little bit difficult, though.
You mean, nobody wants to come hang out with us on...
Well, I didn't want to say it directly, but yeah.
Thank you for your work.
Unfortunately, we, we know that you all have to make very difficult decisions, and that becomes a big responsibility, that we don't have a lot of people that are clamoring to take on. So thank you, is what I'm trying to say, for your work and your dedication and your service to your community.
I think I see the lady back there that's ready to sign up for this board.
Okay, yes, ma'am, of course, but if there comes a time, whenever you're interested, I'd love to help you. That was really good, good way to get people in. Are there any questions about anything going on in our division? Okay, thank you.
All right, next, item number seven, next meeting agenda, the next regular meeting of zoning board of adjustments is scheduled to begin at 1:30 PM, Monday, May 5th, 2025, in the City Hall East Mezzanine Meeting Room. And item number eight, adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
There's two and two, and let's go for the vote, motion to adjourn, vote.
Yes.
Aye.
Passes six, zero. Thank you.